Someone just left before I.
Okay, everybody, we now have four of them. So let's start. Okay. Adequate notice of this meeting to be held on September twelve, twenty eighteen at five thirty P M. at the North Edison Branch Library has been provided by publication in the Montague Tribune, the Star Ledger, the Criterion, the Sentinel, Tampa to Edison and to W C T C radio and cable, which is not veritable. Approval of meetings or meeting minutes of previous meeting. Anybody have any in this concerns?
No, what's that you have found about the Russian to approve the meeting?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right, okay. Moving on to financial reports. First key account reports. Did you not add anything here?
Last time he mentioned about the COVID.
Donor?
Yeah, the expense of color. So I didn't see for the how many computer printers we have, so in total we have thirty seven three branches and there are seventeen of them are colored printers.
Can't hear you can't hear with the microphone.
Can you please speak on the phone?
There you go.
Okay. So in total, we have thirty seven printers and among them seventeen are colored printers. Uh, that's why we did a lot of cartridge each one, I think for eighteen around eighteen hundred for each branch. That's what mainly, uh, do you have anything else to say about this?
We usually keep, uh, two spares for every printer. So just in case we run out, right, we have something.
Kaki, you want to say something about this?
No. What do you say it is eighteen hundred?
Uh, around eighteen hundred for each branch.
Eighteen hundred dollars?
Yes.
Eighteen hundred dollars for each branch?
A month?
Right.
Well.
That's very.
That is a lot of money.
Extreme.
The reason this, the reason this came about was the performance order mentioned this in the report saying the expected donor was too high.
Do we have color printer?
We have HPs. HP.
Laser?
Yes.
Okay, so each cartridge costs about eighty dollars?
It depends on the model. It also depends on, uh, regular or high yield. High yield usually costs more.
Yes, it does. What do we usually get?
I don't, I don't, I don't order the toner, so I don't know.
Who ordered the toner? Georgine.
Do we have to stay conscious?
Why, why don't we do one thing? Just figure out if we need all this printers and if we really need them, all thirty seven of them, I think Clara Barton has seventeen printers. Right, more than ten printers, so.
How many printers?
Ten, fifteen printers.
Per, per location?
You have thirty seven printers, right? So I'm just hoping that Clara Barton will have.
Twenty doors we have printed in Clara Barton.
I also noticed like I signed two checks to buy the copy paper. Cost about, I believe, six hundred dollars. I mean, based on the regular price, that's going to be like sixty thousand pages. See, that's the amount we're talking regarding to the printers.
Are you looking at this item here?
Um, I don't remember because I just signed the two checks last week. I checked it around that, I think around six hundred dollars for the copy paper.
And if you're using so much toner, then you don't use it.
Okay, I think we can try to check it, get the details played out, yeah.
How much are we collecting? We charge for the prints, right, to the customer?
Fifteen cent for black and white, twenty five cent for color.
So how much do we collect out of that?
Who's doing the collections after me?
Look at the copy of value and look at the work to find out how much is collected. There's computer copies.
Two is right.
Computer for the copies, six hundred dollars and another eleven hundred dollars in all of this.
Eleven hundred dollars is what they have from the collections?
Computer print a copy in all of this was eleven hundred dollars.
So that means you.
Thereabouts, not that.
So that means you're doing a lot of in-house printing, right, Jane?
Mm-hmm, yes.
All right. Any more questions, positions? On the first key camp reports? Okay. Moving on to approval of billishment August, September.
Um, yeah, I mentioned this one earlier this year. For this H V A C name from February to August, we have twenty five thousand. I raised this question like earlier this year, maybe in January or February meeting. Why do we spend like, uh,
We used to say.
Four thousand dollars just to maintain the H V A C?
So I know we use the same business function.
It's a township contract.
Yeah, but what, what are they doing like I can, I have some kind of doubt of what are they doing to cost that much just to maintain the H V A C? For the three brands here.
They change all the filters, maintain the belts, grease everything, check all the units or freon and stuff like that. That's, that's what they do in their contract.
As well as emergency.
Once a month.
Once a month?
Once a month.
They change filters once a month?
Well, they come and check everything.
No, I can't really say they change all that stuff every month.
They just come and check everything if they need to be done.
But I noticed they have, uh, an additional charge for us.
Yeah, that's just.
They have additional charges everywhere.
Materials.
Material, right, if something other than the filters or if they need to replace a motor or something like that, so that's, that's an extra charge for us.
No, no, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying every month it can't be the same price.
Well, that's what the con, yeah, that's what the contract is. We, we have the contract through the township because they picked, they picked this H V A C company. So we have to, we have to have it.
Oh, I, I, I got it.
Okay, so they, they sign a contract and it's costing us whatever it is a month.
It's an annual contract.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm getting ready, that's what I'm getting ready to say. It was billed quarterly, but it's an annual contract, yeah.
So at the end of this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, truthfully, I don't know when the contract is up. I, it could be two year, I'm not sure what year we're in. We can find that out, though.
Now, the, the, this is my spot on this one, I want to review this one.
That would probably have to go to work with the purchasing program, don't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll go down ten.
Jane, do follow up on that? All right, so we need to approve each?
So. Any other question first?
Any other questions? No?
How do we get approved these printers?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
To do each month separately, sorry.
All right, let's do August first, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
For September, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Moving on to obsolete items, safe.
We have a twenty year old saying we've got to replace a new one. That's waiting for your hire.
Okay, you already purchased it?
Yeah.
That's just following the making, we don't need a motion to approve that.
No, we don't, no.
Okay, let's move on to the director's report. Hi, Rick Roberts, Jane?
Okay, uh, so according to the audit report, I started to I miss the coming.
Can't hear you.
Can you put that a little forward here?
So sorry. For this one. So according to the audit report, I started to work on our new hiring. Um, so I prepared.
Can you hear that, can you hear?
To prepare the new establishment for the library. So my purpose to improve the management in the library, make the duty for each division clear and more team oriented, also to make up for management loopholes, strengthen internal management such as account management, cash flow, et cetera. Make it more efficient and professional to provide better services. So according to that, I created some new, uh, job position plus, um, existing jobs. So I, uh, so here's the new organization chart, um.
What are the new positions?
The new positions, uh, yeah, the job descriptions is in the folder.
Yeah, I saw like we have.
I T strategist and the head of, uh, the security head. Uh, this is the new one.
Head of security, uh, I T strategist, outreach worker.
Outreach worker and.
Um, the finance chief of staffing.
Chief staffing and finance. Yeah, we already started and we hired the, the security head already. And we already also have some good candidates and we and Kaki starting to interview and still ongoing, some other positions still ongoing. So I hope I can finish them in this one and everything can be other mutations and go forward.
Okay, now this head of security is, um, for something I'm not really on board with. But apparently somebody's already approved it. Um, because a lot of these things, um, to achieve these goals or programs that we can bring in instead of having somebody on staff. Like you talk a lot about like training.
Yeah, we have.
And everything, we don't hire that often that I think we need to have somebody fully on staff at all times to do that when they have programs that are, you know, you can pay for a couple of times a year to come in and do that. We also have webinars that are done online that, um, a lot of places in other libraries take advantage of. You know, like with harassment and, you know, and things like that in the workplace. They have to log in and they have to do that. These are some programs that can be paid for instead of just, you know, hiring, um, somebody full time like that.
Yeah, I speak, um, I know if she's playing webinars and stuff, I, I'm from the school system, they did webinars. A lot of time people who do webinars, they push three and four at a time. They don't get the full effect of the actual training. And the security was devised for someone to have to answer to whatever happens on the course of the library. And it's also advantageous in the times that we're in for training for the staff, training for students and adults and everyone who enters into the library. At different times and other, you need to run different types of drills and you need to teach people different things about security and what to look out for.
And those are all things that there are programs available for people to purchase, like libraries to purchase, to bring in.
But I want to mind that, I want someone to report, I want someone that has a report to the library.
And that's usually the director or the brand.
Yeah, but someone needs to report to that person.
Well, we have security guards that we use, correct?
We only have one part-time right now in Maine, but here we don't have it. That's why we have to go back there quickly.
Well.
And also I participate, uh, the city meeting in the town. And they, they, I asked them if they can be invited to train here and, but they said they don't do that. So I, we have to do it by ourselves.
Um, you could go on to the M J L A for those things. You know, it's where you find the libraries, because this is a library and there's a whole library association. And they have these programs already set up where they send people in to do the training.
And it's part of the job this from here, but I'm literally.
And again, I don't really think it's necessary for us to have someone full time.
Which, which are already talking about now? Do that, security, okay.
Ahead of security, whatever.
I think, absolutely, we need security, we need the security guard in, in the branches, of course, absolutely.
Currently, we do have, there are hourly workers in there.
There's only one.
There's only one right now. I mean, I like the fact that there's a dedicated security person who would, who would be in charge of these, uh, part-timers. I think we need someone dedicated.
You need somebody to be in charge of just two part-timers?
I mean, he's not going to be just over overseeing that, he also will be, uh, acting as a security person. That's my understanding, am I correct?
But you're gonna have a full-time security person in a branch.
So did you read the doctor's question?
Yes, I did.
That it only looking after these.
No, that's why it said that I think a lot of times it can, those are the things.
Let's discuss the whole scope of the position, not just a piece and part of it, or let's not get, let you game here. Or you said this, so that, as a whole, uh, given our record so far of what the, the way it has been happening, I think we need this person. Right? Uh, ten years from now, I don't know. At this point in time, I'm saying we need this person just to make sure that we're back on track, we're following all the laws. We're taking care of our staff. Uh, you know, we don't have a liability just in case there is any, uh, untoward incident that happens. If it's not going to happen, I hope it doesn't happen, but we can just move on. So that would be my question.
I would have to, I would have to agree with what Sue has been saying. I do not believe that we need a head of security. We have a director, we have, uh, we have a assistant director in charge of North Edison. Hopefully, we will be having a person, a branch head in, in Clara Barton. And those persons, people would be able to schedule, you know, schedule
various training.
I don't think we need one person because we do have three branches and a, and a bookmobile. And how is this one person going to make sure that we are protected, you know, from death, fire, injury and other damage?
Uniformity and the person will teach each branch, the library, the Edison, North Edison branch, the Clara Barton branch will teach them, will go through the daily positions of the different trainings and stuff. Everybody, every library doesn't do the same thing, every library, the bookmobile, everything requires something different. And each person, each person, each group of staff members should be trained because if something crazy happens somewhere along the line, somebody need to be responsible.
Totally agree, we need training, absolutely, for us, yeah. But I believe we can do it by bringing in the outside help and doing it that way.
It's not consistent.
It's, it's consistent enough for what we need with a sixty-four member population here in the library system.
So you want?
Yeah, yeah. Before we talk each of these one, I was trying to look at these, um, I think there's five new positions, right?
Yes.
Do we, uh, like have any number on the, like, extra budget for this one?
Well, the other new positions I would probably too, so might as well just take our time and go through each one.
They were, um, positions were part-time, so it wasn't a heavy thing on the budget. But these things came up because of the auditor's report.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's fine, like, I'm just trying to see like what's the, the impact of the, of all these to the budget. Do we have any like, uh, analysis or any kind of number?
I haven't seen any.
Jane, do you look at the budget for, uh, this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Some of them are timed, so.
As a, uh,
That I presented this.
The budget, say, we need to, say, for the last year, the expense, including, uh, compensation and benefit, uh, we added these positions, are we going to say increase by like half a million or like, uh, three hundred or four hundred million dollars or do you have any number?
Depends on if we can hire all of those, because some of the part-time maybe we cannot. Those positions cannot be filled, so I cannot be reading exactly.
Actually, that's a million dollar question there, and you'll never be able to find out. Have you looked at the budget, Alfred? And you looked at the salary?
Yeah, that's, that's the one I, I.
It's not actually, it's a split.
Yeah, I don't know the kind.
Same as with the benefits. You're paying one point seven five million in benefits on a two point two point seven.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, right there.
So the question happens is, do we get audited? As of right now, even I don't think so, it should be an issue, but we'll find out in the audit when we get it in two thousand and twenty.
Well, I don't think it should be an issue in the way of the director needs certain people in director hires, we should.
But just to talk about the budget, we had a surplus of
Yeah, that's the one that.
About two twenty-five in twenty seventeen. And we did get about two seventy more this year, Jane, I don't know from the township, were two sixty more.
Two sixty.
So.
I think it's two sixty-five.
Two sixty something, yeah.
Two sixty plus of the one we used to have surplus on the previous, previous years, man.
So how much, how much does this impact the budget, Jane, all these positions put together roughly?
Roughly how about, it's about six. But less, less than, it depends on the.
No, I'm not talking, I'm not talking about, okay, okay, Jane, there are positions that were open from before.
Yeah, some of the existing, yeah.
That doesn't impact, we don't mean but the new positions.
For the new positions.
You were just asking for my new one.
Just the new positions. So if you look at this. Okay. That's one before. So two. I would say about
Part-time, half, two, five time.
Two fifty to three hundred, roughly, two seventy-five hours, right?
One, two.
Right? That would still fall under what we have in the budget.
In either one of that, three, it's two part-time, it's going to be like ten hours or?
Twenty to twenty-five, whatever.
Depends on the.
Twenty to twenty-five hours, correct?
Twenty, yes, yes, for like the outreach, maybe only fifteen to twenty hours.
Okay.
And on the.
Two hundred, three hundred K.
These are the needs, I think.
Okay. All right, so, um, everybody's spoken about this, but you have, go ahead.
Especially with head of security, head of finance and chief of staffing, I think that we should not even consider these positions and still, until we check with New Jersey Library Association and the New Jersey State Library. We do not work in a vacuum. Edison is not the only community that has a public library system. I think we need to check and see, are these any kind of positions that are held and, and in any public library? A chief of staffing, I would say is our director. Um, and head of finance, I, I, I don't see it, I really think we would be. The title of the head of finance is just a bit of a misnomer for our needs. We've had a bookkeeper before and I agree, we need to have somebody doing a little bit more with checks and balances and making sure everything, most of the money's come in. You know, but, um, the title of the head of finance, um, I think it's a little overkill, you know, for the needs.
I think based on the audit report, that we.
It's basically also, yes, well, the order is a guide.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, based on what I see, like the way we're doing the bookkeeping and based on the audit report, on how to check this, this account and how to audit the, I mean, control the spending. I think we do need a
Okay, absolutely, we do need help with that, absolutely, but just, you know, as reminded, the audit report, as well and good as it is, is a, is a guide for us. It is by no means set in stone, number one, and number two, we can have the same job, but maybe just play with the title a little bit. Again, if you're gonna go to something like head of finance, remember, we are part of Edison Township and some of those services are already provided by the township to the library. So to pay for a head of finance, when they have a head of finance that we work with at the township, it somehow just seems like it's gonna be, we're gonna be paying for something twice.
Evidently, it's not doing good for here if the auditory report said there is something wrong with the way finances are handled.
I, I agree that there has been, I'm just saying that maybe we should just play with the title a little bit.
So everybody's spoken about this, uh, does anyone want to vote on this or?
Well, there's still more, there is still more, um,
You still want to talk about it?
Job descriptions.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, seriously, chief of staffing? We have a library director, we're only sixty-seven people, it's not like we have five hundred and sixty-seven employees. We have our library director who is a chief of staffing. We have our other branch heads who work with the library director for staffing for their particular branches. Why would we need another full-time person? Especially when you're not even asking for someone to have library management experience. I mean, this is a library that does have separate rules and laws, as Pat was saying. How can we hire a chief of staff that isn't even a librarian?
Well, I do believe we need somebody in that position, you know, when would the, when, can I just? When would the evaluations done for all the employees, does anybody know?
No, evaluations we were starting to work on to do.
Remember, no, no, my question was, when were they last done?
Well, now that we have a union contract, no, they weren't done before that we started to reevaluate them and to start doing them when all the union things came up. So therefore, anything that was done before that is most likely negated. And yes, we do need to be doing job descriptions, I don't, I don't, I'm sorry, evaluations. But I don't think that's for a chief of, we need a chief of staffing to do that. At least Sue is here, she could tell you.
I was here, it was done very, very long ago, maybe like at one time, I think back in two thousand fourteen. Maybe a little before that. Two thousand fourteen. It was done one time, two thousand fourteen, I don't think everybody was done.
All right.
Four times. It was done during the union contract, it was, it was like that. Because of that situation, they had nothing to do with whether you, um, received an increment or, or it had, it didn't affect, it didn't affect your pay in any way at all with the, that.
No, it doesn't go on affect pay.
Are you done with your job?
Well, it's, it's, it's over four to five years ago, so that's what.
Wait, that's, that's what I heard.
That's what the thing is, you ain't gotta look it up, but something is over for four to five years ago. I think it's longer than that.
Okay, so because we need to do, um, the evaluations, you want to hire a chief of staffing that doesn't even have, going to have library experience?
That was just one of the things I mentioned. But let me just say this, I mean, we hired Jane, I, I understand what you're saying. And I kind of see both sides, but we hired Jane to do the best that she can. And if she wants to move forward with this, I mean, we should, no, we can't question her on every decision that she's finding, and, and these things will definitely improve our life, that's what I believe. If it's in the budget, I think we should go forward with it. I mean, all these jobs.
I think we should really be dealing with the jobs individually and not as a group. Okay, there are some jobs that we may, you know, leave and some jobs that we may not, number one, number two. Um, what is going to be the status of the unions regarding these positions? And also the fact that, um, I'm a little concerned because, you know, maybe some doesn't have library law experience.
See, hiring and firing is up to her. Okay, that's very clear. As far as the union goes, Jane and I met with the union people. Joyce also, she was there. And these people will fall under the non-laboratory unions. Except for, um, the staffing person because she will be privy to some information, uh, so she will not be a part of the union. Um, I mean, do we need to vote on this or have you done, I mean, you know, obviously some people feel strongly when we, um, what is the?
I don't, I think that this is a director's prerogative. But we could use the director's prerogative, and I understand that, and I completely agree that except for the board hiring you, you have the say in terms of hiring, uh, and firing in the, in the library, but I really think that we need to adhere with, um, recognized job descriptions through New Jersey Library Association and, uh, the state library. I really don't think that we should just create these positions. I, 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 just, I don't think we should do that. I think, I think it would make more sense to check with them, maybe tweak some of these job description titles and. maybe tweak some of these job description titles and and we think it.
So, you're, uh, so you think none of the other libraries in New Jersey have any position or description which are not in the library?
Well, obviously, they would have branch head. Yes, they do. Chief of staffing, I do not think so.
Not the ones that we have, but in general, except for the ones described by the board, by the library, who we're talking about.
Well, remember.
Association, just to run the library. Do you think none of the New Jersey libraries have any other position?
I don't think that they have some of these positions.
But they have different positions. They have different titles.
Oh, they have branch heads. They have branch head.
No, they have different titles and different organizations. What I'm saying is, we should do what's good for us. What is good for our town, right? And at the end of the day, the only reason I'm saying is, if you go by the report, right? Whatever was tried or not tried up till now has not worked. Okay, if Jane is thinking outside the box and if you think it's good for the community, do you think we should do that or not?
No, I don't. And I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you, and and out of due respect for Jane, I think it would be in, it would be better for Jane to be in the position for a bit before deciding and confirming these new positions. Obviously, the branch head, yes, we want to fill that position. Obviously, we need help with security. We might not need a head of security, but we need help with security. Um, I think sometimes it's helpful to start an new position and get your, you know, get a sense of what is going on. I also believe that the the opportunity, and I didn't have much of an opportunity to, um, read this whole report because I just received it today, but since I was here when it was presented at the, I believe, July meeting, I did not hear anything that was said that was really earth-shaking and brandy. We've talked about fines. We've talked, we've talked about many of the things that are mentioned in this report. Um, so, and yes, okay, so we need to work with Edison, with the township, and figure out what we wanna do in terms of what financial support they can give us so that we don't have to repeat and hire a head of finance. But I really think that we need to just take a deep breath, think about these things. This is the first time I'm seeing any of these or the organization chart. I have not seen any of this before this evening. So, I I don't think that it would be in our best interest, in the community's best interest, to like rush that to, to fill this. Except for the branch head of Clara Barton.
Alright, so Jane, you heard all the comments and, uh, you don't have to vote. You're saying, right?
I think it's your.
Okay.
Is it?
Then you want, you heard all the comments.
Can I ask how branch head search is going now?
Yeah, it's going well. So, we are starting to view somebody and we, we and Akira interviewed someone and we upgraded somebody. It was really, so we're going to move forward with that.
Okay, good. Okay.
Okay, I have a question. Just a suggestion, uh, like, for some of this, like, say, full-time, is it a, if we are thinking the amount of work is not that much, is it possible to see like whether that, some of them can be completed at the time?
A comment or a question?
Both.
If it's a comment, we can move forward. I think we spend enough time. If it's a question, you can talk again later. Okay, time sheet agreed.
Oh, time sheet, okay. So, I talked with the HR in township and they're going to upgrade their system in January. So, they're going to use the new system called Unicorn. So, we're going to synchronize with them at the same time. So, probably from January, we're gonna use the new type, reset of their card.
So, they come in and they scan something or use the thumb?
Yeah, something, yes. So, yes, that's the new one we're going to use.
Do they have cards? What do they have?
No, they don't have cards. We have the cards here. We, we, we write our, by our.
No, 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 how, the new system works?
The new system is, is right now they use the, what's that?
By a fingerprint.
Yeah, they use a fingerprint right now. And the new one, I think they're going to use, uh, you register for, for a computer. You just wanna do that also. And also you can check it out whenever you're in the, in the library, you, you you sign in and when they're out, you sign out here. Yeah, so it's like electronic system.
So, every time you do the building, you have to.
Yeah.
I, I use that system because that's why I use this.
Okay, okay. Follow-up tone or pause? What are they talking about there?
Talking about that.
We're gonna do engagement calendars.
Anything longer?
For the community, I think, uh, I want to say two things instead of this. And we have a foundation flower selling on this, uh, September twenty-second, and so far we are doing very well. I, I wrote it on my, um, report on the back part because I reached out my community and we get a very great, uh, response. People support a lot, so they already, I already sold two hundred flowers by myself. And I think this time, our foundation, they really did a great job. So, September twenty-second, we're going to have a big flower selling in the May, so hopefully you can come to buy some, or to support us. And the other thing is that, uh, September twenty-second, same day, we're going to join the Edison family spectacular event. Our, uh, junior, um, department, you know, so bookmobile will.